Rocco.
Councillor Coates.
Here.
Councillor Estrada.
Here.
Councillor Shamp.
Here.
Councillor Chamberlain.
Present.
Councillor Sturts.
Here.
Councillor Fry.
Here.
All members are present, we have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. Can we have the approval of the prior meeting's minutes? So moved.
Second.
Motion moved by Councillor Coates and second by Councillor Estrada. Councillor Coates?
Yes.
Councillor Estrada?
Yes.
Councillor Shamp?
Yes.
Councillor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Councillor Sturts?
Yes.
Councillor Fry?
Yes.
Six yeas, zero nays, motion carries.
Anybody wanting to talk? Okay. Let's start with committee reports. Finance, busy finance.
Yes, the Finance Committee met on November 24th at 4:40 PM. Had several different items to go over. Started out with the computer server upgrade. It's hardware and software. Kyle McQuillan from Prime Tube was here to explain the need for updating the software. Microsoft will not be supporting it in the future. And besides this being the software for the servers upstairs, it also has to do with the emails, the entire city email process. So it is a citywide necessity. He had two different options for us and at this point in time, we had discussion on it, but the committee's going to review the quotes and get back with Kyle as far as which way we need to go or which way we'll service that. The next item of business was the three different Clemmons and Nelson proposals. We had received quotes from that firm to develop performance evaluation system, to develop a classification plan and position descriptions, and then also to develop a new compensation plan for the employees. We definitely discussed the need for all three of these and the different pricing options to whether we go with a monthly retainer or do the non-retainer. The Finance Committee felt it was definitely more economical to go with the retainer version of the three for a total cost of $19,610 and then we would pay $175 a month retainer, which it has been determined that that can be canceled with 30 days' notice. And that will then be the recommendation coming forth from Finance. And we also discussed with Finance Director that that money is available in next year's or in the budget. So that will be the recommendation coming forth, that we go with all three of their proposals at the retainer cost. And then we briefly went over the 2015 budget. Time is running short. Jamie explained to us that all aspects, all funds of the budget are now considered legal based on revenue there previously. She'd been working on the general fund. The Finance Committee will meet again this coming Wednesday to go over the specific capital items in the water plant and the water reclamation plan, try to finalize that. So the only recommendation coming out of Finance is that we go ahead with the three proposals from Clemmons and Nelson.
Jamie, have you got some more about the grant funding?
No.
They're working on it. It's quite lengthy. So hopefully that would be, help us with Clemmons and Nelson. Okay. Any other questions on that? Let's move on to department head. I'd like to make the recommendation. Oh, I'm sorry. Should we make them here?
Oh, sorry.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Motion moved by Councillor Coates and second by Councillor Sturts. Is there any more discussion? Councillor Coates?
Yes.
Councillor Sturts?
Yes.
Councillor Estrada?
Yes.
Councillor Shamp?
Yes.
Councillor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Councillor Fry?
Yes.
Six yeas, zero nays, motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Now we'll move on to the department head reports. David?
Again, just moving forward with working with the downtown revitalization grant, working with some of the downtown folks to move forward with possible commitments for that program. To date, I have two business building owners in the downtown area that are looking for commitments and projects there. So going to be working with them and hopefully moving forward. Thinking after the first of the year, after we have the money released from the state, that a couple of public hearings might be warranted, public hearing or open meetings with local contractors and with the folks that are recipients of the downtown revitalization grant, just to get some more outreach going, inform those folks that the money is here and what we can use it for.
Thank you.
Sure.
Chief?
Just working to finalize EMS contracts before the end of the month. I had a productive meeting with Mike Hall today, County Administrator, and we should have a final document prepared and ready for the next council meeting.
Thank you. Phil?
Last Wednesday, the police department was given a grant from the Healthy Choices Care Communities and for eight hours of traffic control, which was for two officers actually. During that time, the police department was able to do 19 traffic stops, which two were drug-related arrests and one was a driving under suspension, OBI. So it was a very productive week last Wednesday with all the traffic out.
Pay it off. Thank you. Tom?
The main thing is, a week from today is the starting date for Wood County doing the commercial inspection. And I handed out some packets that also got sent out to the planning commission, as there was some discussion about site plan review by the planning commission. And in that packet, it outlines all the sections that require the planning commission to review site plans. And my goal would be to get some of those changed so that we don't have to, like an example would be the industrial districts and some of the other ones. So we'll be discussing that. We will be having a meeting this month if we can get a quorum, because the hospital has an addition that we just got the site plans for today. Where we're at.
Are the inspectors changing?
Commercial.
The commercial is?
Yeah.
It's going from Wood County to someone else or something?
No, it's going to Wood County. Used to be the state, now it'll be Wood County, so people don't have to travel to run the cars where they want.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Tom. Dennis?
Don't have too much this evening. The Public Works guys have been busy, as you can see, putting up the Christmas decorations and making sure that the Star work, the Star was involved in an accident. What are these poles were? It functioned well and the parade went off okay. We had some overtime over the weekend with the water main break and some slippery roads here and there, but all's going well. And of course, working with the budget, which hopefully will get finalized later this week.
That break get fixed, too?
Yes, I believe so.
Dennis, I meant to mention to Dave that he was here a minute ago, could you have him check the lights up down, the A&amp;T type lights? They weren't burning this morning. They're supposed to be on from dusk to dawn or something like that?
All of them are off?
They were all off, yeah. So I don't know if the timer's off or what. I meant to say something to Dave. I forgot.
Yeah, I know, they just redid the timer because of the Christmas parade. Get them all on setting.
Christmas parade was awful dark going down there. Are they supposed to come on after the parade? Turn them on?
Steve was here to do that.
That's what I, I just noticed it was pretty dark. Okay. Okay, Jamie?
Okay, I provided you the income tax revenue for year-to-date, including November. We are ahead of last year at this time by 2.4 percent, which is looking pretty good. I also provided you that to month-end November financials within budget, that's looking pretty good so far. Finishing budget. That's all I have to do.
So we're looking at the fourth year in a row of income tax revenue growth, that way. That's pretty awesome.
That's really good.
Does this coincide with John Chan's retirement at all?
I knew that. Things did look up there.
I'm sorry.
This included the appropriations that need to be moved forward out of the out of the wastewater. That wastewater. I was just curious about that, because that was a little bit of a chump. Okay. Tom?
I have spent some time interfacing with the Clemmons and Nelson folks just to get questions answered for the Finance Committee, and I think that they are prepared to, after tonight's meeting, I think, get us draft the retainer agreements for our review and hopefully have that in front of council next meeting. Working with Rick a little bit on the EMS contract issues and then got some policies that I need to get back to Bill here before he sends them over again. Being very nice.
That Clemmons and Nelson's is going to have to go through an emergency then in the next meeting, correct?
Yeah.
Do the prices going up?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
That's it.
Do you have any questions?
Yeah, Tom, could you give me a, us a Reader's Digest version on the benefit of the retainer?
Yeah. So the way the retainer works, and that's a really good question, because when I think of retainer, I think of putting all the money up front, you know, and then working off of the amount paid. But in this case, the retainer is $175 a month, and then we will be billed for the work as it's performed on a normal basis. The retainer is essentially, well, there's two primary benefits to the city. One is that unlike the non-retainer scenario, we don't get charged for the travel time. And he's, I believe he fell down in Lima, so that would be, wouldn't be charged until he actually arrives. And then the other benefit is that we have sort of an open door policy with calls, routine calls down to Clemmons and Nelson if questions arise after or during the process outside the scope of the agreement. And then also, of course, there's a cost savings. Even if you multiply, if we did it for a year at $175 a month, it would still be less than. If you add that to the retainer prices, it would still be less than the regular rate. So we're able to lock into 2014 rates by doing that.
Thank you.
Those calls, I remember I can really add up quickly when you call. I know with engineers or anything, they get costs late if you don't have a retainer. Okay, do you have any questions? Okay. Let's move on with first reading of legislation. Resolution 2014-24, approval of solid district waste management plan update.
Quick, Katie. Second.
Motion moved by Councillor Sturts and second by Councillor Fry. Is there any discussion? Councillor Sturts?
Yes.
Councillor Fry?
Yes.
Councillor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Councillor Shamp?
Yes.
Councillor Estrada?
Yes.
Councillor Coates?
Yes.
Six yeas, zero nays, resolution 2014-24 passes on first reading.
Yes, resolution 2014-25, authorizing the mayor to enter into agreement with public entities pool for casualty liability, fire and property damage insurance and declaring an emergency. Severe pep.
I move we suspend the rules and declare an emergency.
Second.
Motion moved by Councillor Shamp and second by Councillor Coates. Is there any discussion? Councillor Shamp?
Yes.
Councillor Coates?
Yes.
Councillor Estrada?
Yes.
Councillor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Councillor Sturts?
Yes.
Councillor Fry?
Yes.
Six yeas, zero nays, motion carries.
Do we have a final?
Final passage. Second.
Motion moved by Councillor Sturts and second by Councillor Fry. Councillor Sturts?
Yes.
Councillor Fry?
Yes.
Councillor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Councillor Shamp?
Yes.
Councillor Estrada?
Yes.
Councillor Coates?
Yes.
Six yeas, zero nays, resolution 2014-25 passes on emergency and is now in effect.
Thank you. Ordinance 2014-15, amending section 501.01A2 of the codified ordinances of the city of Waseon, limit definition of vicious dog.
I wanted to just step in here a second. I did mention Shane and Jeff, that I had talked to the dog warden. I'd also talked to a couple of people from the veterinarian's offices. The dog warden would like a chance to speak to council at some point in time, as he has not had a chance to do that yet. We also received an email from someone else who said that maybe we need to look at some of the legislation that's coming forward from the state because of the past legislation that's removed this vicious dog definition. So I'm wondering if we should table this for now, or if you guys want to move forward, that's fine. But I personally would like to have the other side of the story before I make a decision, because we haven't heard from, it was mentioned that maybe we should hear from somebody from the police department and the dog warden, and we haven't heard from those people yet, so.
We did hear from the police department.
We heard from Torbit. Yeah, the chief Torbit spoke to us during the safety and code. And then we also heard from our chief legal expert on time and waters, so. The safety and code did hear from, well, we are pretty important people within the city, that being the chief of police and our law director.
Dog warden just had concerns and said that he would like to have time with council, so since he's the one that would have to actually go out and deal with.
Heather, are you aware of the legislation that's coming down, the changes to the amended already?
They're trying to be a little more stringent again at the state level because of some of the things that they've seen.
And they said, how so? Obviously, they just changed the wording for vicious dog. I mean, are they saying putting it back in?
No, I haven't heard exactly how it's, how, there are two people that are trying to get the legislation changed, but the wording, I haven't heard exactly how they're trying to do that. So, you know, again, I don't want to, it's not necessarily that it's, that it shouldn't, that we shouldn't pass it. It's just I think I don't want to jump into something and then have to change it again next year. I mean, I would like to have a little more time just to.
Yeah, because I think after we went through and called all the other cities and, or all the major cities in Ohio, it was like, I think Lima is the only decent-sized city who has not converted. But Toledo, Cincinnati, Cleveland, Columbus, Dayton, they've all converted.
I don't care that they've converted or not, I want to know what their issues are, if they have, if they have taken that out, what issues they've found, and if they're going to go back to, or if they're going to try to go back to some kind of more stringent wording.
I have no problem with anybody coming in and talking to us. I don't see any reason to slow down the legislation, though.
Go back to first reading, there's two more readings afterwards. Hopefully, before the second reading, hopefully we can get him in here and.
Or he could come here on council night and speak to us.
Yeah.
If I could interject, this is a legal matter here. I note that in the copy of the ordinance that I have, and I assume that also has in the packet, that section one provides that the section 505.01A2 is to be amended as follows, and then there's no description of how it should read.
Right.
So, and I'm not sure how that happened, I'm sure that's probably my fault. Maybe I was trying to fit the whole thing on one page and decided to inadvertently shorten the thing, but this should read, and I can have it prepared for the next meeting. It should simply read that the definition of vicious dog follows the state provision without the rest of the paragraphs. Actually, this will actually be quite short, and we're deleting the rest of the paragraph which describes a vicious dog and include a pit bull breed and all the different variations thereof. So I apologize that that actual description is not on there, but we can, I think you can go ahead and vote on this this evening, and I can get you the proper language next time around.
I believe Chief Torbit said that if a dog is already deemed vicious, there's no going back, so if we change this, it doesn't mean that some of the dogs are deemed vicious bull. There's no way any of it falls.
Yeah.
Repass.
Yeah, I think that's right.
That's, yeah, that's what it would be, moving forward. Yeah, because this shouldn't really impede the ability to enforce the dog laws. If the dog breaks a rule regardless of breed, it can still be.
That's correct.
The person can be still, the property can be seized.
So if it's a, if it's a vicious dog by virtue of being a pit bull, then it would no longer be a vicious dog. But if it was a vicious dog by virtue of having committed some act or satisfied the definition as it's set forth in the state statute, then it would be, still be a vicious dog, yeah. And if council would like, I mean, I can pull the code and just read you how that would be, how it would read as currently, if council agreed to amend it. That would be helpful.
You can just send that out tomorrow, that's fine.
I think that'd be, that'd be nice to have for all the council members that were present during the safety and code meeting, to see what the actual language change would look like.
And even Chief Torbit said that we didn't have a dog problem. He said that regardless of the change, it's not going to impede him from being able to enforce that law. That was just his statement.
Sure.
Yeah, I just want to reassure our fellow council members that we did hear from the chief of police and our law director before bringing forth the recommendations, so just wanted to reassure you guys. Martin and I didn't act, go rogue or anything like that.
And he said, he was, he was on board with it. He said it didn't really matter either one. He can still enforce the dog laws, whether that changes or not.
We'll just invite the dog warden.
I'd like to hear from him, because he deals with.
He's the one that we.
Dogs all the time, so I'd like to hear from him, so. I say let's have a first reading and.
Well, if he chose to wish to come forward and talk with council, that's his choosing.
Right.
Again, is council's wishes to go ahead with the first reading on this?
Yeah, I'd make a, I'd make a motion for first reading on ordinance 2014-15.
Second.
Motion moved by Councillor Chamberlain and second by Councillor Estrada. Councillor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Councillor Estrada?
Yes.
Councillor Fry?
No.
Councillor Sturts?
Yes.
Councillor Shamp?
Yes.
Councillor Coates?
I'm going to abstain right now.
Four yeas, one nay, and one abstain. Ordinance 2014-15 passes on first reading.
Good discussion. Second reading of legislation on resolution 2014-22, revising the city of Waseon investment policy.
Second reading.
Second.
Motion moved by Councillor Sturts and second by Councillor Coates. Is there any discussion? Councillor Sturts?
Yes.
Councillor Coates?
Yes.
Councillor Estrada?
Yes.
Councillor Shamp?
Yes.
Councillor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Councillor Fry?
Yes.
Six yeas, zero nays, resolution 2014-22 passes on second reading.
Third reading of legislation, resolution 2014-19, authorizing the mayor to enter into an amendment to the agreement for indigent defense services in county court with the Fulton County Commissioners.
Third reading. Second.
Motion moved by Councillor Shamp and second by Councillor Estrada. Is there any discussion? Councillor Shamp?
Yes.
Councillor Estrada?
Yes.
Councillor Coates?
Yes.
Councillor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Councillor Sturts?
Yes.
Councillor Fry?
Yes.
Six yeas, zero nays, resolution 2014-19 passes on third reading and will be in effect in 30 days.
Resolution 2014-20, authorizing the mayor to enter into the city-county dog service contract with the Board of Commissioners of Fulton County. So moved.
Second.
Motion moved by Councillor Coates and second by Councillor Sturts. Is there any discussion? Councillor Coates?
Yes.
Councillor Sturts?
Yes.
Councillor Fry?
Yes.
Councillor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Councillor Shamp?
Yes.
Councillor Estrada?
Yes.
Six yeas, zero nays, resolution 2014-20 passes on third reading and will be in effect in 30 days.
Resolution 2014-21, authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Fulton County for bail bondsman for Fulton County Court, Western District.
So moved. Second.
Motion moved by Councillor Fry and second by Councillor Shamp. Is there any discussion? Councillor Fry?
Yes.
Councillor Shamp?
Yes.
Councillor Sturts?
Yes.
Councillor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Councillor Estrada?
Yes.
Councillor Coates?
Yes.
Six yeas, zero nays, resolution 2014-21 passes on third reading and will be in effect in 30 days.
New business. Like to have a motion to accept the 2015 schedule of council meetings.
Second.
Motion moved by Councillor Coates and second by Councillor Shamp. Councillor Coates?
Yes.
Councillor Shamp?
Yes.
Councillor Estrada?
Yes.
Councillor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Councillor Sturts?
Yes.
Councillor Fry?
Yes.
Six yeas, zero nays, motion carries.
Okay, we need a motion to authorize the director of finance to pay all the bills possible for December 31st, 2014, so we can close out the year.
So moved. Second.
Motion moved by Councillor Shamp and second by Councillor Fry. Councillor Shamp?
Yes.
Councillor Fry?
Yes.
Councillor Sturts?
Yes.
Councillor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Councillor Estrada?
Yes.
Councillor Coates?
Yes.
Six yeas, zero nays, motion carries.
She knows she has to pay those out of her own pocket.
Did you get that memo?
And here goes the city bills.
Motion to accept the appointment of Shane Chamberlain and Rick Fry to the volunteer firefighters dependency board for the term 1/115 to 12/3115.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
People have the same initials, I just realized. And I wrote J.S.
Things come to you at our time.
Who's who, right?
Motion moved by Councillor Sturts and second by Councillor Shamp. Councillor Sturts?
No discussion about this, no?
Councillor Shamp?
Yes.
Councillor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Councillor Fry?
I suppose.
Councillor Estrada?
Yes.
Councillor Coates?
Yes.
Six yeas, zero nays, motion carries.
Fortunately, it's not a very busy court. Motion to accept the resignation of Ron Graham from the planning commission for his unexpired term to December 31st, 2016.
Let's make a motion to accept. Graham, regulation. Second.
Motion moved by Councillor Sturts and second by Councillor Chamberlain. Councillor Sturts?
Yes.
Councillor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Councillor Fry?
Yes.